Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11th Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 16th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to be reading out a Galatians today. I just went to pictures instead of the picture that I took. Okay, it is verses 5 through 9. "I ask you again, does God give the Holy Spirit and work miracles among you because you obey the law? Of course not, it's because you believe the message you heard about Christ. In the same way Abraham believed God and God counted him as righteous because of his faith. The real children of Abraham then are those who put their faith in God. What's more, the Scriptures looked forward to the time when God would be declared the Gentiles to be righteous because of their faith. God proclaimed this good news to Abraham long ago when he said, 'All nations will be blessed through you.' So all who put their faith in Christ share the same blessing Abraham received because of his faith." And I have the dog this morning. Little Minnie, come on, little Minnie. That would be a nice name for her, little Minnie Mouse or Minnie...
Minnie Mouse.
Yeah, so cute. We have a little male Chihuahua. He is five years old and he is available now, so we want to get him out of those little cages over there at the dog kennel. He's a sweetie, he's got a great personality, just probably sit on your lap all winter long and keep you nice and warm. So if you're interested for a little small dog, you come out to the kennel, pick him up, or we have other dogs that you can check out on our Facebook page. But make sure you adopt and not chop. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So Curtis Tugle?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Curtis Tugle. I am the current President of the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County, and I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to extend a few remarks on behalf of the Board. We appreciate the support that the Commissioners provide for the work that our Board does. Since 1989, the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County has served as the planning agency for prevention and treatment of, you know, alcohol and addiction in the county. And in that role, you know, we've focused on identifying resources that are necessary to deal with some of the problems that we've all become all too familiar with. I think everyone in the county is acutely aware of the opiate and heroin epidemic that is plaguing every community, whether it be urban, rural, you know, urban, suburban. It's in every community and it's a very pervasive problem that not only threatens, you know, families and communities, but the economic prosperity of our county, our region, of our state, of our country. So it's a very serious issue that we've been focused on. One of the things, obviously, that you all are probably also well aware of is that resources available to deal with this problem, even though this is a problem that continues to grow in magnitude and becomes all more pervasive, the resources available from federal and state government have been tightened. You know, we do have budget issues that have to be dealt with, and with Medicaid expansion, it was thought that that might relieve some of the resources that are necessary for Boards, you know, around the state to address these issues. Unfortunately, Medicaid only covers certain services. In order for someone to really have a recovery, to really be able to, you know, address their situation and be a productive member of the community, there are other supports that they need: housing, employment, sometimes daycare for their children. So there's still a critical need for support, for financial services. And we went through a process last year where we developed a strategic plan for these types of issues for Lorraine County, and we identified, you know, based on data available to us, what the need is. And the need's significant, and we identified ways that we can collaborate and work with people in order to address that situation. We're also, with respect to the opiate and heroin epidemic, the planning coordinator for our Community Health Plan in order to reduce that problem here in the county, and we were working, you know, with our partners on that. Interesting, just to share with the Commissioners, as you all are probably aware as well, at one time, the state had a Department for Mental Health and a Department for Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services. Excuse me. And there were the, the counties were set up with separate boards as well. What we've seen, you know, over the past few years is that the state decided to combine those. Many of the populations serve, have co-disorders, so people with mental health issues sometimes, sometimes very frequently have substance abuse issues. And so we see that common population, and so the state combined their two departments. And at one time, there were several counties that had separate boards. Now, many of those counties, Commissioners make those decisions, combine those. Lorraine County serves as the only remaining county across the state that has a separate Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board and a Mental Health Board. And I just wanted to share that in terms of talking about our Board as well. The other thing that I would like to just mention is that September is National Recovery Month, and we have to celebrate recovery. We host a race at Bar Oak, the Lorraine County Metro Parks. I was very pleased, I thank you and your staff, when I rode the elevator up, I saw our poster right there on the elevator wall, and I appreciate that. We invite you to come out, to be with members of the community and celebrate recovery, and also talk to folks about what we can do to, you know, address these very pressing issues that face us. So thank you very much for your time this morning. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Elaine, anything? No? Okay.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Before we go on, I just, I thought, just came to me, are you, were you here when requesting that we combine those boards or recommending that those boards be combined? You said we're the only ones that are not. Is that something that you're looking to us to address in the future? If you can come up here, I'm sorry. While we were going on, I just thought, well, is that...
No, no, I was not recommending that. The Board has not taken any formal position on that, just sharing with you the background and how our planning agencies, how that's evolved, you know, at this time.
Okay, I didn't know if that was the recommendation, okay.
I thought there was two out there that weren't combined, but...
I thought Trumble was still...
I guess since we're throwing darts out here against the wall.
Yeah.
I thought there was two still left, wasn't there, Elaine?
Well, okay. Elaine Jorgas, the Executive Director of the Alcohol Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County. There, in 1989, there were seven separate communities that had separate Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Boards. Just recently, Butler and Mahoning have merged with the retirement of their personnel. So we've continued since 2007, working with a resolution from both our Board and the Board of Mental Health to have a joint Board Committee. So we continue to work on efficiencies and collaborations. Our Boards meet every other month, and they're made up of members of our Board, and then we staff it. But, you know, and the conversation isn't coming up here per se, but, you know, the issue is, is, you know, the focus with the epidemic, you know, we're really hyper-focused on the epidemic as being an Alcohol Drug Addiction Services Board. Other Boards have, you know, from severely mentally ill to addiction and abuse in their purview with limited funds. So, you know, the issue is, who can best address that in their communities? But our Boards continue to meet, but yes, there's no statutory noise anywhere. So we're, we're holding our own, I guess I could say, but we're only doing that in a way that we're collaborating with everybody, because addiction crosses every path, every department, every community. Does that help? So you were talking about housing and employment and the focus of trying to help addicts with that next step. Do we have a place? Are we trying to come up with... Yes. I know we were talking about the River Edge at one point. Yes, and to be honest, primary purpose is the entity, and on September 11th, they officially closed their transaction to purchase the property. Hopefully, they'll be open around the holidays. The goal is to have 16 sober beds under the state guideline and then expand to about 40-plus more beds for a variety of sober housing. Yeah, that took a while, their state funding for capital improvements that is gonna be coming through, and they just did an application for operating for that. They just submitted that last week. And then Road to Hope House has opened recently, a women's facility, and they've got at least two men's facilities. So the housing is starting to open up, but yeah, primary purpose will be there. They're working now through, they have to rebuild the whole fire suppression. These are sober living facilities, though, what about like an inpatient rehabilitation? We don't have that. That does not exist in our community as yet. Are we planning to open something like that in the future? Well, that's part of the plan for the whole, the whole focus. We're charged, well, every Board in Ohio as of September 15th, 2016, will be mandated to put in place a complete continuum of care for opioid addiction services. And the state is still trying to figure out if that means you have to have all of those services in your community, or if you can also have relationships with cross-regional borders. So, and that's something, our men's residential contract is with Orca House in Cuyahoga County. We facilitate a transfer of care with them. We have the key with women's programs, and there's nuances with all that. We can only federally have up to 16 beds in any facility because of a federal law. But we're, so we do work across systems, but detox is still a closed issue in this county. Lookada has started what's called ambulatory detox, meaning if a patient has a safe bed to sleep in, they can come and get a detox protocol eight hours a day for up to seven days, which is physician-monitored, and getting them engaged. Luckily, they've got a physician who's focused on addiction and is putting the right medications in place, and that's another piece. There are new medications that can help. There's Suboxone, there's VivaTrol. That can help balance the brain and the physiological effects of addiction and get people on their path to treatment. But no, there's not any inpatient yet. We're working with hospitals on what they could do to screen and refer, and how we could get, you know, more clients assessed earlier and screened earlier, because that's part of the problem. Our goal is they end up in the emergency room or overdosing, and we want to build this part with that continuum mandate.
Is that the Rivers, the Rivers Edge, that's that 12 to 18-month transitional...
It could be, that's the minimum. I mean, the, they could live there as long as they need, as long as they, you know, it bridges to, they'll be supporting it more financially, so it's gonna be based on individual need, but that's the initial goal. But yeah, they just finally closed on that, so we'll have that open soon.
Exactly, we are the only one.
Yes, at this point.
The only one.
Last one left.
The only Alcohol Drug Addiction Services Board in Lorraine County, or in Ohio, and we get a lot of calls from our peers about addiction issues at this point now, so it's both ways, but...
So as you have these, this study group or whatever, you are actually looking at whether that is something that's possible or feasible, or you're not even exploring it?
From our Joint Board Committee, which is made up of the Board of Mental Health and our Board, we've been just talking more about making sure that whatever we do together is efficient. They process our claims. They process our, they're our MIS hub. Some of the backroom things have happened regardless. We've not consciously had that in those discussions of the Board members recently. They start, we both have a couple new members on the committee, but we've reiterated our mission, again, was to seek out efficiencies and make sure that we're coordinating care for clients that are in both of our systems. More focused on the clients, but looking at if there are administrative efficiencies. We try.
Sadly, I've seen the Administration talk a good game in Columbus about being so concerned about it, but when it's actually come to providing the funding that's needed, it hasn't been there.
Right.
In fact, one of the craziest things I saw was when they talked about, were, and were bragging about providing more rehab beds in the state of Ohio. The reality was that that money was actually coming out of your programming funding.
Right.
And it was portrayed as being additional funding or really stepping up to the plate.
Exactly.
That didn't happen. So I think it's important for the public to know that there's a little, little bit of deception going on there as to what the state's true commitment is to this initiative, and I know you folks can't say, but I certainly will, that there needs to be a greater commitment to it. We have a serious, serious problem. So when you hear about the state really stepping up to the plate to provide additional money for rehab, it actually came out of programming dollars.
Exactly.
There were no new dollars, no additional dollars.
No, they moved the money.
Don't be misled by that. That wasn't the case. And, you know, I'm just amazed by all the money that we can find in Columbus for everything and everything else, and the tax breaks we can provide, but we can't find a way to take care of our people. I would recommend to you, if you, if you can do it here locally, is actually try to do more public awareness, going out there and actually bringing, similar to what we see in Columbus, the Voices of Recovery. And it's fascinating, because individuals would come in, they'd have about maybe 20 individuals, they'd do a luncheon every year, and each individual would step up for about 30 seconds to a minute and explain what their past was and what they were doing today. And when you hear stories of people who, you know, lived in a car for 10 years, or were totally down and out on their luck, now they're college graduates, now they own a home, now their kids are going to college. So it's all about, you know, keeping families together. It's all about having healthy people to be productive members of our economy and contribute to our economy. And so it can be done, but there needs to be a greater commitment on the part of the state to help you. I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a cold here, so my voice keeps breaking on me here. But I appreciate the work that you do, but, you know, you folks are really kind of put behind the eight ball each and every day, and it is, it is a crisis. It is a crisis, and we appreciate what you do, but I would just encourage that if you can continue the conversations, because that collaboration is critical, because the resources aren't there. So the collaboration has to be...
And we're finding, you know, every door's open. I mean, we even have Board members at events this, this month and from this point forward committing their time to help with the awareness, because like you said, it's, it's starting to affect everyone, and it's not just in a geographical or a socio-economic area. So Commissioner, you were at Hope Over Heroin, and I understand you were there on Cold Friday Night, and we appreciate that. So working with the churches, we're working with the schools, we're working with businesses, everywhere we are to get people that can bring the resources they have to the table, and we're, it's, it's amazing that that's happening nicely, so we'll keep going. So thank you. The drug court should be open pretty soon. Yes, the recovery court, I heard has their second person, and they've got about 12 referrals as of last Wednesday. This is not something we're gonna arrest our way out of, for sure. No. But, you know, the court focus, the way we're looking at addiction as a chronic disease now, and how do we look at that? If we had heart disease, how would we treat it? If we had addiction as a disease of the brain, how do we understand that and how do we all change what we do in a healthy, drug-free community? So thank you for letting us have this time on the agenda, and we'll be back with more, because we are on a state initiative of creating a recovery-oriented system of care in our county. So that'll be real exciting to have rolled out to you soon, also. Look forward to hearing about it.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Elaine's also on our Children and Family First Council and provides a lot of extra help to us there. I think I missed your meeting the other day.
That's okay. We had a great meeting.
Well, I had some other things come up, but she does a lot with us there, and it's been a really great partnership.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Well, you know, let me take a look here. I don't think I have any hires for Golden Acres, which I'm probably gonna say somehow accidentally in the future, because we've been doing it so many years. But I do have a few potential hires in our IT Telecommunications Department I'd like to talk to the Board about, and Job and Family Services. Also like to update you on our contract negotiations with Teamsters with regards to Golden Acres, and the notice and intent to negotiate filed for the Record Center and all of our bargaining unit employees under the Commissioners' umbrella from the General Fund, plus ongoing legal issues, and purchase and sale of real estate. So I think I covered the whole gamut there. All those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board, may we go into executive session and talk about those issues that I've specified? Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved away the reading in the minutes of September 8th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approved agreement with Guardian to provide flexible spending accounts and offer critical illness benefit effective January 1st, 2016?
Mr. Cortez, you wanna update us on this?
I can. As you know, as a condition for allowing access to county employees for supplemental medical policies, disability policy, life insurance policies that are handled under the Section 125 Cafeteria Plan, we require the current vendor to give the county access to flexible spending accounts under Section 105 of the tax rules. We've done this this way for over 20 years. It's a good program. People get to pre-tax dollars that they can use for their deductibles. We also have a premium-only pass-through program for the portion of the premium that they share that they can tax deduct that. Those accounts, you know, they require maintenance, and normally there's a sufficient amount of cost to them. I would say usually five, six, seven dollars a month to maintain an account for an employee each month. Our requirement is that we get them for zero dollars from the provider of the supplemental benefits to our employees. That changed last, late last, excuse me, late last year going into this year, that they no longer, the company we're with, that they were with were going to be able to do that, and there was gonna be a cost. So we tasked them to find an alternative at no cost to us, which they did, hence this contract here. We need the flexible spending accounts, as more and more of the deductibles and procedures that are out there put a burden onto the employees, they really need to be able to tax deduct some of that and take advantage of those savings. I wish our penetration and saturation into those accounts was bigger than it is. Some people forego that. I don't know why, especially since now you can roll $500 from year to year.
There's no longer lose it, use it or lose it each year?
Well, you still use it or lose it, Commissioner. The, you know, a couple years ago, we saw better utilization when the IRS allowed over-the, over-the-counter medications, that they did the OTC. So folks wanted his word at the end of the year, because they had a few dollars remaining they could go in and, and capture, you know, some things that they may use in the next coming months and exhaust their accounts. I thought that worked well. There must have been abuses somewhere out there, because they did do away rather quickly, within two or three years of the OTC allowance under flexible spending accounts, and they went back to the more restrictive use it or lose it rule by, well, it wasn't quite by the end of the year, because there was a grace period 90 days into the subsequent year. Even that grace period didn't give people a comfortable feeling of being able to exhaust their funds, so we saw a dramatic decrease in that utilization. So about, you wanna say a year, two years, two years ago, they, they changed that war, and you could either pick the grace period going into March, or you could roll, pick an alternative to roll $500 of your allocation into the next tax year. We chose the 500, so that folks could better manage their money in the flexible spending accounts, and we're trying to get them to, to see that there's a real huge benefit to the accounts, plus they, if they manage them well, they should be able to get within $500 very easily to roll it into the next tax year. So we're working on it. It's a great program, it's, and I'm glad we have it here in the county, and we're gonna continue to try to get people to understand the benefits.
Okay, thank you. So moved?
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized issuance of not exceed $2,175,000 general obligation limited tax sewer system improvement refunding bonds. This for sanitary sewer improvement 104 Amherst.
Yeah, I'm gonna cover all of these, if that's okay with you?
Yep.
The sewer bonds are ripe for refi. The General Fund and our GEO obligation really doesn't change much. I wish I could tell you there was a tremendous amount of savings to the General Fund, and we're gonna have more money next year. That really just isn't the case. These are special revenue bonds, special assessment bonds. We commonly call them sewer, sewer assessment bonds. We will save the taxpayers some money, probably between $500,000 and $700,000 in payments that they'll make on these notes that are assessed, so their assessments will end sooner down the road, because the debt will be a little less costly. That's good for them. It doesn't cost us anything to roll these notes. I believe the bond market is gonna be pressuring up very soon. I think the cost of money's gonna become more expensive very soon. These notes that are on here are fairly aggressive in themselves. We got them in good times when the market was low, but I wanna lock in a rate for the taxpayers that are the best that they're gonna see, you know, for the next 10 or 15 years. I have little doubt that if it doesn't happen tomorrow, that it's gonna happen within the next few months, where we're gonna see the Fed, you know, move the prime rate up, which will start moving the bond market in an upward direction. Again, I truly wish we were saving money for you and the, and the General Fund, but this saves the residents that are paying these debts some, some dollars. I think we owe it to them to look at this every chance we get. Now, on the number...
Are we gonna look at all of our notes that are hanging out there to go to bond?
Lisa and I have looked at every one of them. In fact, we had a bond rating presentation yesterday. Didn't make it to Chicago again, but just, was just so busy. I will caution you that while I thought the presentation went well yesterday, and it wasn't as long as it usually has been, the growing wasn't as bad, I just have a very unsure feeling about where we are and what's going on, and we've been, we've been with the same person now for several years. I've actually presented with him personally, and Lisa's gotten to know him very, very well. The, you know, he kept cautioning us about our cash position and our declining reserves and declining carryover. I explained to him a few months ago, several months ago, that we were making a very understood drawdown in our carryover, and that we anticipated two to two and a half million, maybe a little more, less carryover, and that we were conscious of that. Not that that was an accident, that they, it was gonna happen, we're gonna try to explain it later on, and we're still on that, that drawdown, as you are you aware. You know, I'm hopeful that the rating will be maintained, but each one of these becomes a little bit more challenging as they look at our finances. The, generally, we're a good risk, but we're in, we're in an increasing expenses, declining revenue posture. Sooner or later, they're gonna put us at least on a negative outlook, if not a downgrade, until we be able to turn that around. The one saving thing has been the sales tax. It's generally been increasing about 2.5%, 3%. It's steady, but it's not our only line of, of resources that are used to promote the operations of county government in Lorraine. The issue of the local government, as you well know, declining there, there's been decline, interest income has been in the basement. We had to explain to the rating agencies yesterday, you know, why we, we have a set aside on $14 million... aside on $14 million, and the $14 million is the bonds we sold ourselves.
Right.
And that, you know, the best producing investment is the ones that we, we've issued for various sewer improvements that the treasurer has bought up, that's, you know, generating interest into the portfolio. But the rest of the portfolio, I think, is doing like about .08.
Maybe.
I stopped going to the investment meetings. You guys went to the last one. Is it about .08?
Yeah, somewhere under.
And while those investments are producing, you know, three and four percent revenue. And I did tell them I didn't see that improving anytime soon, even if the bond market upticks, and those are the vehicles that we're only legally able to invest in the very secure markets. I didn't see our yield curve improving for five or six years. Even if everything improves in that market in the next year, we're going to be flowing out of-
Right, two, three-year commitment.
Two, three, yeah, not five.
Our yield curve runs two to three years. So, we're going to catch it in a couple of years. So, I did let them know. I did not see our condition improving anytime in the very near future with regard to state support, interest income support, and fees. The best thing is to be candid with these guys and make them understand, we have a firm and deep understanding of our condition. The last thing they want to believe is that somebody's at the helm that has no clue what they're doing, and they have to, they find all these things out by accident as they occur. So, we try to give them a picture down the road of what we're dealing with, how we're dealing with, managerial controls that are in place. They also want to know what's going on in the economy in Lorain County. You know, we had a lot of good news out of Avon. In fact, the gentleman has been here. He, you know, he was, he was aware of the construction going on with, in Avon at the hospital. He was very excited to hear we had a Cabela's coming to Avon, and before I even said anything, he goes, "Oh, that's great." He goes, "That's really going to give you guys some pop over there." So, you know, they pay attention to what's going, going on here in Lorain County. But I also want to address number 14, and there was an inquiry on number 14 that I received by email, why the bonds did not add up to the overall not to exceed. Well, we have cost of issuance, cost of legal counsel, cost of bond underwriting. All of that still produces the 500,000 to 700,000 in savings, but it has to be rolled in to what we're doing. So, if anybody adds up all of these and says, "Well, we can't do our math," we can, and that's a not to exceed. We always put a little bit of fluffery in there because it's a lot easier not to exceed than just come back and change the resolution for a dollar ninety-eight and stall the whole process. So, before anybody asks, that's why that, that's there.
Looks like our, ours equal more than the 9.5. Doesn't it? Six, seven, eight, nine?
Actually, I think the-
It adds up more, not less. So, there's no extra for costs?
Let me see what I have here. The sum of the three, oh, excuse me, I said it actually backwards. The sum of the three is the 98. With the savings, it'll go down to 95, and that includes all the cost of issuance and everything else. I actually got it backwards. I talked myself into a little frenzy here. But, you know, it's, these are things that we do to save people money, and it's necessary. And I apologize for the way I stated that because it's actually driving down the cost and, and again, five to $700,000, depending on when we price and when we, we lock in the rate in the market. I want to thank Lisa Holbar too for working, she always works with me on these things, and we got our routine down pretty good with the, with the, with the rating agencies, although she, she won't allow me to go to Fitch anymore. She doesn't like that guy, so. Good job, Lisa.
All right, so moved?
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized issuance of not to exceed 6,750,000 general obligation limited tax sewer system improvement refunding bond Broadway Taylor Sheffield Township.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized issuance of not to exceed 1,560,000 general obligation limited tax sewer system improvement refunding Marks Road Columbia Township.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Consolidate the above three bond issues in the amount not to exceed 9,535,000 established terms as such consolidated issue.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Commissioner, I have one more thing at this time, and the, as you know, I've been talking to all three of you about doing borrowing for various projects, and we do have some notes moving around. We're going to have to jiggle some of that to get under the 10 mils limitation on bank-qualified I don't want to see us get out of the bank-qualified arena and thereby, you know, either paying higher rates or having some of the issuances non-tax exempt. So, we may have to wait. I think, Lisa, did we figure out the complete number? We may have to wait till January and move some money around to cover some of the expenditures. As you know, we're going to need money for Pheasant Run. We're already pretty deep into our reserves on, on the sewer. Of course, now everybody knows that we're working on the Justice Center, you know, we need money for that, and we move money around because we let a contract for the architect and the services there, and we have to have funds available to do that, and we move that.
You mean the courthouse?
The courthouse.
Excuse me.
Courthouse.
The courthouse, I apologize.
Yes, Justice Center.
And I'm trying to think, and the last piece was, which we're going to talk about in executive session, was a purchase of a parcel of real estate that we've been working on for a while. I'll need funds available for that. So, we're going to have to move stuff around and get into January because I just don't want to get over the 10 mils, but we'll have more conversation about that. And that's why you don't see any new money on here. We thought about having it on here, but we're, we're holding up right now. But, but I'll talk more about the real estate and, and the reason and how I think we should finance that until January.
Adjusted salary increases Lorain Municipal Court employees effective September 6, 2015 reflects county's chief of share Craig Demian Bailiff One. New bi-weekly rate is $861.54, and Richard Schwartz magistrate new bi-weekly rate is $1,248.9.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Enter into Lisa Greenwood Fairview Eye Clinic for the office space at 6100 South Broadway Suite 301.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
You have something about comical?
No, it's just, you know, that space has been empty now, 10 years?
Right.
We were, we tried to sell it for a number of years, and, and since, you know, I already had a lot to say this morning, I might as well have a little more to say. The, this, this, this space here was, was purchased by the, the old Transit Board a long, long time ago, and it's a condo suite at One Park Landing on Broadway. People probably know the building. It's One Park Landing. It's right next to the Nord Center. We couldn't sell it, we couldn't rent it, we couldn't do anything with it, so we actually stopped trying about three years ago because depletion schedule was coming to an end, and once the depletion schedule was done, the county owned it and didn't have to share any proceeds from a sale with, with the FTA, which was kind of nice. So, we did, we made a conscious decision not to do anything with the property for three more years. Seven months later, what happens? Somebody comes along and wants to rent and possibly buy this space. So, we've been working with it. Karen Davis has done a great job. We're going to put it into productive use. It's going to mean $20,000 of new money into Transit that can be used as a local match to federal money, which, you know, we were trying to do all along. It's funny how when you, you give up on something, then out of the blue. So, I'm really excited about this. I'm excited about the money it's going to bring into Transit, and we'll, we'll see what we're going to want to do after the depletion schedule's done, when we fully own the condo ourselves and not in partnership with the FTA.
Good news.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Enter Community Development. Enter new contract with MS Consulting Inc. in the amount not to exceed 25,000 for consultant services for the preparation of an update to the Columbia Township land use plan and draft zoning resolution amendments. This will be used to implement the updated plan and will impact the sewer system, which is deteriorating to the types of and of and level of growth that can occur, and resulting development will require the management of storm water to be paid from the account sanitary sewer contract professional services.
I have a question for Don. I thought this was 30,000. Did I do my math wrong yesterday when I looked over the contract, or did you just squeeze them a little bit?
We squeezed them a little bit, and while we're getting, their original proposal was for 30,000, they've agreed to charge us with that 30,000 not to exceed 25 without a reduction in the level of service that we originally negotiated.
Good job.
Wonderful, good job.
The, I always like a job like that. I was reading the, the proposal and the terms that still had the 30,000 when we spoke yesterday. Commissioners, this, this is going to be a good partnership. Let me explain what, what's going on. Columbia Township is under a tremendous amount of pressure right now with development. It's actually flowing west out of Strongsville and flowing south out of Olmsted Township in Olmsted and Olmsted Falls. We have a really good relationship with some developers out there. Tremendous amount of housing is going in, a tremendous amount is proposed. We're finishing up our sewer this fall for Redford, on Redford Road, and they're already talking about a development that will make that appear small. I've met with two different, actually three now, big developers with big parcels that are talking about how we can get sewers to those parcels, and, and they can start building within the next couple of years down there. And talking with the trustees, and Jerry's been out with, with me, and Don's been out, Columbia Township has an older land use program. They're worried about how to handle all of this development, and they really would like to have some progressive density going into the township and where the sewers go. In order to partner with them correctly and make sure that we're working as best we can with them and on their behalf, and we need to update that land use plan, we need to update storm water plan for Columbia Township, and, and we need to do it two hours ago because, because developers keep just coming in in droves. And also the last-
Are they participating in the parcels too, or are we funding the whole thing?
Well, they'll be participating through sewer fees, storm water fees. I mean, we're, we're taking it out of those accounts. We need to know where the storm water is going to go. We need to know where the, where the sewers are going to go. We need to, all of that's, they have to have a, a plan, and so I'm excited about doing this, and it's, it's breaking some new ground with our relationships and partnerships with, with the unincorporated area, and I'm hoping that this is the gateway to bigger and better things that we do with them together. We're, you know, we're looking at Pheasant Run down in La Grange. We've talked to the trustees down there. They have some concerns that I'm going to address this week with, with some of this, the routing of the sewer, but, but I feel really good about what's going on there. And if, if half of the development happens in the next five to 10 years in Columbia Township that people are talking about, it's going to be a completely different place. And somebody actually has approached us about bringing sewers all the way down to Route 82. Strongsville has not given me a reply, Commissioner, to my request to at least allow us to have some of the capacity that's remaining. I know it's not a lot on their sewer down there at the, on Walton Road, Route 82, coming across the border, but they won't even acknowledge our presence. I keep writing in the letters, and they keep ignoring us, so we're really probably going to have to take care of ourselves and get our own sewer. It's either going to come down Marks Road or possibly Moon Road down that area.
Look at all those plans.
Sure.
So, it ends up being-
And I, we've had, I've had a real good conversation with, with Walco about their, their stubbed-out sewer on 82, right there in Eaton Township, because no matter what we do with Northeast Ohio Regional, they can't get across the river. So, that portion in Columbia Township that lies west of the river will be sewed somewhere west of that river. So, I have a couple of different proposed flow agreements on my desk right now that I really need to get to and respond to Walco, but our folks and Jean Troy from Walco have met, and they've come up with some, some proposed ideas, and I'm really glad to be doing that too. It's, it's time for us to, to work together on some of those things. Lots going on.
Well, I'm glad to see, yeah, just glad to see we're working in partnership with them, and there's no question the community is getting ready to grow significantly, and I was on Avon Lake City Council back in the 90s when Avon Lake kind of hit that stage where it was going to just explode with growth, and you have to figure out what your future looks like, and certainly a land use plan is the best way of doing it and try to bring about some sensible growth, which growth can be difficult to manage. But I'm glad to see we're working in partnership with them, and congratulations to the Director for getting us a better price with the consultant. I know you've been doing a lot of that lately, and we, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey, Don? Don?
Yes.
I, I have an email out there. I did, I did have some suggested changes in that contract.
Yes, we've, uh-
Okay, just wanted to make sure that caught up with you.
And we're incorporating them into the contract.
Okay.
Do I have a question?
No, you don't. Oh, okay, so moved?
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
At war various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 14 home repair activity, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders, this being the most responsive to be paid from the CHIP home repair account. Carl Construction, Inc., North Ridge Hill, the amount of 9,790 for Norbert and Louis Ganselbeck, Avon Lake for roof gutters and down spot replacement. Two Concrete and More, Inc., Avon Lake in the amount of $5,303 for James and Katie Heath at Avon Lake for sanitary storm separation. And three, the Handyman Greenwich, the amount of $1,379 for James and Carrie Carpenter, 854 Robert Street Sheffield Lake for hand reels and railings.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Did you have anything?
No, we're fine unless there are any questions.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
A war contract to J&amp;L Environmental Solutions, Worcester, in the amount not to exceed 1,700 per design or designated client address to provide professional services to perform soil tests and septic system designs to be paid from the FY14 CHIP account.
Want to talk about this one?
Actually, this is something new that we've had to do with the change in the sanitary septic system rules with the State of Ohio that the General Health District has been burdened with trying to require. Basically, even though we know in Lorain County our soils are dense clay and they're not really made for septic systems, we have to hire a soil scientist to tell us that we have dense clay.
Even though we already know we have it.
And then recommend a system that we use to just put in automatically using the, our existing septic system installers. And so, this has kind of driven up the cost, it's reduced our, our ability to do things, and it's also elongated our timelines.
So, $1,700 per homeowner?
Yes.
It, it, well, you're seeing more and more stringent regulations with regard to the systems that are allowed onsite. Right now, it's just about impossible build on anything less than R3.
Yes.
Anywhere outside of the sanitary sewer lines, and, and they're going to continue to tighten that grip, and we will see sometime in the next 20 years the need for suing everywhere as they restrict the access to onsite systems, and, and this is all part of that. I wasn't aware it was 1,700 on each one.
Yes. We did get, Ohio DSA has actually at least given us a waiver because the costs have gone up so much so that we don't have as low a cap, otherwise we'd be out of the septic system business more than likely.
How many do we do? How many do we do? Uh, we don't, we don't do a lot of them on the chip, but I know we do some. Do you have any?
We do anywhere from, on the low end, it's been five. On the high end, we've done about twelve. Uh, this cycle, it looks like we're gonna end up being closer to that twelve number. Now, one of the things that we are doing while we're entering this contract so we can keep things moving, um, Soil and Water has hired a new person, uh, that is supposedly, and I haven't gotten to, to meet the young lady yet, but is a soil scientist. And we've had some preliminary conversations to see if they couldn't provide this service at a lower cost. I'm just waiting to make sure that, uh, she has the qualifications and would be on the, uh, the approved vendor list for the, by the Health District. Uh, and if that comes in, then we would have the ability as we go forward to hopefully drive these costs down.
Do something similar to what we're doing with the erosion control?
Yes.
With them. Uh, they've been good partners. I, I like working with Soil and Water. The, uh, we contract with them now for the, for the, uh, erosion control services, right? Well, we don't really contract, but we provide funding.
Correct.
The board does, and, and we provide some assistance from stormwater fees. Uh, is she gonna be doing that, uh, work over there?
Yes, she just started, uh, the Tuesday after Labor Day, and we are working on setting up a meeting so that I can meet her and we can kinda go over our policies and procedures.
Who, who's been handling the erosion control measures in Columbia Township since we've vacated the position?
Currently, it's been gone undone, other than my few times driving through.
Yeah, we need to make sure she gets out there pretty quick, 'cause as you and I both know, they're, they're a little remiss of some of those developers.
Right. And she's actually in the process. She should be finishing up her reviews. Uh, a couple of the subdivisions that were being discussed earlier will be before planning commission. And before it goes to planning commission, we need the, uh, the erosion sediment control.
Yeah, 'cause they're building down in Eaton off of, uh, fifty-seven up in Eaton Township there and, uh, Columbia, and there's a couple others. So, I know we've had some minor problems. I don't wanna call them minor, but, but compliance has been an issue with one or two of those builders. And I wanna make sure we, they don't, they don't develop some-
Bad habits.
Patterns of behavior that, that are gonna be hard to correct.
It would be nice for this money to go to somebody in Soil and Water, especially if they can use that money as part of their matching-
Right.
Money from the state.
Anything we can do to make them a partner and prop them up, we will.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Renewed the two thousand fifteen Prevention Retention Contingency Plan and Scope Assert Coverage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under sanitary authorized application of, for, to OPWC for round thirty funding cycle for Pheasant Run rehab and replacement project. Estimated project cost is three million nine hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars with OPWC funding request of five hundred thousand.
We sure have a lot going on, don't we?
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, the, uh, we, I think I informed you that we, we hit a bit of a sticky wicket with, uh, Pheasant Run with regard to Eastman's on common property, uh, that, that was titled over in a lawsuit, um, where the sewers, the onsite sewers are currently located. Until that issue is resolved, we may not have the Eastman access to those sewers. Now, we've already been through there, smoke testing, camera checking, uh, doing a lot of prep work. As I indicated you, the forced main sewer that's gonna go up to LaGrange, uh, is, is not the hardest problem. That's, that's the easiest part of this whole project. Hardest part's fixing there onsite. That, I've seen some terrible stuff before, but this is the worst that I've seen there onsite. It's probably, uh, the worst in Lorain County, down in those five hundred homes. And we have a lot of work to do, but we have to be able to get access to the sewers to, to start that process. And, uh, now they're gonna get caught up in another legal battle, it appears. Hopefully, it won't be too long. Counselors indicated it may not be. Uh, but everything that happens down there is always so complicated and convoluted. Uh, I had hoped to have sewer service down there sometime in late spring, early summer of seventeen. It's tick-tock. Every day right now is, is, is potentially pushing that. And it's not day for day. We lose a couple days here. We may lose a couple weeks at the other end because of timing with, with weather, conditions, agreements. Jerry's did a fabulous job finishing the agreement with Pheasant Run and LaGrange. That was no simple task to, to get all those parties together to agree. Lots of things have to happen concurrently. Uh, I don't blame LaGrange for the things they asked for. In fact, uh, you know, council had, was a little bit surprised at some of the things I agreed to. But I wouldn't agree to expand my plant without guarantee that I was gonna get revenue-
Right.
Uh, from the expansion to pay debt service within a short period of time. So, uh, a lot of things gotta click together. And, and now we got, we got another twist in the road that wasn't anticipated. And I don't know how long it's gonna take to clear out. Uh, we need to continue on. We need to apply for these funds. Similarly, Jerry brought the parties together, rushed them to get the agreements done so we could apply for, uh, other dollars that were available to possibly decrease the cost to the residents down there. Don't know if we're gonna get those grant monies or low-interest loans, but we had to be finished to make application. This application has to go out now or we miss the window to apply for these funds. Don't know if we're gonna get OPW funds. Uh, but we're trying to find any sources of monies that will decrease the overall burden to these homeowners because the burden is gonna be significant. And they have no choice. I, I just hope that we can get through some of the, they can get through their legal issues, 'cause we're not involved in those legal issues.
Right.
Uh, rapidly, uh, and, and, and move forward. I, I'm not sure, Jerry, if, what you had mentioned to put on the agreements onto the agenda at some point to suspend them?
Uh, yeah, I have a proposed agreement. I don't know whether you, LaGrange has passed a resolution, uh, suspending it with the realization that, you know, they're gonna have to start doing things pretty quickly if they're gonna meet the two thousand seventeen, um, deadline. Uh, you know, I'm getting an indication from the other parties, the Pheasant Run people, that they're gonna file and hopefully get a resolution within the next month. But I don't, I, um, I do have a resolution here to just kinda put everything on hold until we get a, I don't know if you wanna pass that today or wait a little bit.
Your advice counts. I, I, I will tell you that we're probably a hundred and fifty thousand deep in this thing, uh, to get sewers out there. Normally, uh, well, all that money will come back once we do a project, but normally I wouldn't put that much money out there on a project. Uh, but we had to move pretty rapidly. Uh, my intentions are whether we complete this project or not. I recoup those funds from Pheasant Run Association one way or another. But, but as Mr. Ennis has pointed out, how much can you ring a chamois? They're, they're, they got a lot of pressure on them down there right now from other, other, uh, problems. But-
Well, if you wanna, I mean, it's set up so that we can immediately, immediately rescind it the minute, uh, but if you wanna get that on the, on the table.
My only question is if, if I sought to recover, uh, some of these expenditures from Pheasant Run at some future date by suspending the agreement, would that indicate to them that-
Well, I was gonna discuss these things in exec, so maybe-
Why don't we do that? Maybe I-
I was, I was just gonna ask for exec session on that, so.
All right, there's could be some legal issues there. All right.
We'll just hold off on that.
Yeah, but I still would like to apply for these funds. lining this stuff up doesn't cost us anything.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under transit, submit federal grant applications with FTA and other federal agencies for fiscal year sixteen transportation assistance grants.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Lundey, this is what I spoke to you about yesterday that we, you know, I know that there's some, some partners that are trying to line up some, some funding, but I don't think they realize that we have to make application alone. So, if, if that funding materializes the way they believe, we'll have to make additional application and hopefully we'll get some funding. I want anybody, everybody out there to know that just because we come up with more money locally doesn't automatically guarantee that we're gonna get more federal dollars. It takes a while to get queued for those dollars. Depending on the, the sizableness of them, it could be, it could be a year.
It must be honest, our transit is a necessary priority in the region compared to what other transits are chasing after with their local match dollars.
I would like to, I would like to address that. I, I, it's a yes and no, Commissioner. I, I really enjoy working with the folks we have in Chicago and the FTA. They were down here about a week ago. We, we spent some time together. Uh, they have been really, really super at flexing themselves to the maximum angle possible to guarantee our funding, maintain our funding, and work with us on this transportation project. Uh, the, uh, you know I've run into some snags with, with Norfolk Southern there, the, the letters. You'll get copies of them. They, they went out yesterday to Norfolk Southern, you know, challenging some of their, their, um, demands with regard to costs that we believe are unacceptable, that they should be taking care of themselves. Uh, without the FTA's participation and their partnership and, and their ability to look really far down the road, we would have no project. So, I wouldn't be writing a letter to Norfolk saying, hey, come on, guys, 'cause we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to cobble together the funding streams that we have. That said, I need to make application to the state of Ohio and ask for additional toll credits, but I need to know exactly what I'm asking for down there. We already, we already received a significant allocation. They said that they would, they would, uh, accept additional application, but they're not gonna take two, three, four. They wanna know, uh, where the, the, uh, the clear line of sight is to the overall cost that they're partnering with us. And so, I'm hesitant to ask at, at this point because there's some unidentified cost. Not to mention that the FTA did indicate to me very, very strongly that some of the things that Norfolk Southern was asking for, uh, they would not agree to them as a cost of the project and therefore would have to be paid one hundred percent locally, not twenty percent locally. So, I got my hands full with those guys. Uh, you know, they're, it's funny when we come across these billion-dollar companies, uh, it's, it's, uh, but we will deal with them. And we will, we'll, we'll address each one of, one of these things and try to be successful. But, but that said, you know, I know that there's talk out in one of our communities of, you know, possibly eighty or a hundred thousand dollars of funds coming to us. I don't want them to think that we can turn that spigot on immediately because there's, there's a lag. Um, and, and so, I, I want you to understand that when we're out in the community. But we will do everything we can. But the FTA ha- they have been good partners.
Oh, they've been good partners. I mean, but we've returned so many dollars over the years and not done things with our local match.
Well, you know, they're, they're not upset about the returning of the dollars. If, the, the, uh, they would like to see us have a bigger transport, uh, public transit here. They would like to, uh, see a robust funding stream to us. But as long as we release the dollars soon enough and we're partnering with them in a way that makes them understand that we know that they can move the dollars other places, the one thing that they will not be tolerant of is if we sandbag this, and we sandbag the dollars, and then those dollars are lost to the FTA. Uh, so there's only a certain amount of years that, you know, you can convert, uh, grants to actual dollars. And, and believe it or not, we're, we're still in some dollars that are four or five years old, but we gotta keep moving them. And, and they have a requirement in their job to expire those dollars and exhaust those dollars, or they revert. And, and so they're, they're always running the ragged edge with us, especially with the, with the transportation center project. So, uh, I, I, I like when they come here and they visit. They, they, they see a lot of things going on and they're very supportive. And, uh, I'm hopeful that they'll find us some, some stray dollars if, if we're able to generate a little bit more local match.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized filing of applications to DOD for fiscal year sixteen transportation assistance grants and may include Ohio elderly and disabled transit fare assistance programs and urban transit program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under domestic relations, approve and enter an agreement with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to define the relationship and responsibilities between agencies and seek Title IV-E federal financial participation on behalf of Domestic Relations Court Juvenile Division effective retroactive July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirty, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve and enter an agreement with Bromhall Engineering and Surveying in the amount of five thousand to complete the value engineering services in effort to make recommendations for construction cost reductions for Cooper Foster Park Road improvements in the city of Amherst and Lorain and will be paid from the engineer professionals account. Nuaca has allocated two million for fiscal year nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, support Lorain County law enforcement and officers nationwide.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, Sheriff's Committee had forwarded over a, uh, resolution from another county just, um, supporting our law enforcement. And I, I've always had family members in law enforcement or friends who had family members in law enforcement. And we just really need to get behind our, our guys and make sure that they have what they need to, to do their jobs. So, I don't know, I know the committee must have sent you over here. Is there anything that you wanted to say, Dryas? No?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, having also worked as a, as a former reporter for like twenty years, had the chance to see firsthand, you know, law enforcement in action. And it's, uh, it's a very, uh, very tough job. And they go through a lot of extensive training. And, uh, you know, most of us, when we walk out the door, uh, family members, you know, expect us to come home every day. When you walk out the doors, a member of law enforcement, I think families know you may not come home that day. Um, so it's, it's, it's a very difficult and challenging, uh, profession. And, uh, greatly support what they do each and every day to keep us safe. And the sadness is with the, the ongoing cuts in local government funds, it makes it more and more difficult for us to properly staff, uh, fire and the properly staffed police and, uh, all the first responders. And, uh, so the challenge gets greater every day. And, you know, I even point out when I ran for this position over twenty years ago how few, uh, deputies we have patrolling the roads and how twenty years later, it's, you know, still close to the same situation where we know we can always do better. And, uh, but, um, so with the limited resources that they have, they really step up and, and do amazing work.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff's Committee. It's a long overdue, I mean, to put it this way, but what we've been going through in our nation, uh, blue lives really do matter. So.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Two things. You know, strangely, we're talking about local government and, and supporting our, uh, safety forces. And blue does matter, Commissioner. Kayla, you're right. Um, especially since seemingly now it's become sport uh, to, uh, to try to target those individuals that we need on the front line, protecting ourselves. There's always a few bad apples in, 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 in every organization. And the few, the very few that are bad should not taint the very, the very many that do a wonderful job every day. Um, that said, one of the local government things is that the state has a new, uh, new requirement for police training, I believe, and CUs, and that things that gotta, that have to be done to be a law enforcement official. And, uh, I found it interesting that, uh, they required these things to be done. And, and so that offset the cost of what they're requiring. They, they're taking out of local government funds. It was in the budget bill that was, you know, how big. Uh, so they just decided, now all these things gotta be done. And by the way, we'll just take it out of the local government funds to fund it. Uh, it, it's probably one of the better things they've done in some of the funding, but they keep coming up with these mandates and they, then they just take your money and they, they, you're gonna pay it from here. Uh, and again, we continue to see an erosion of our ability to, uh, get back to the right size of our partnership with the state of Ohio. They continue to bank money and, and put money in the program and that's questionable at best at the expense of what we need here. Another thing I wanna really briefly discuss, and I know I had a lot to say this morning, which is a little bit unusual, but, uh, Republic and Republic, you know, the, became a big hot topic last week. They got out there into the communities that they, they wanna vacate part of Butternut Ridge Road and, a big section of Butternut, uh, and consolidate their properties across the road, et cetera, et cetera. Now, you're aware that the county has been meeting with Republic over the last several months, putting together incentive packages, looking at various options to get sewer service to them at, at both their locations. And, and we've had meetings with, with some of their higher-ups from outside the community on several occasions to make sure that, A, that we maintain the jobs they have here, maintain their, um, trucking services here. And they was talking about some additional enhancements to that that I don't really wanna discuss here. And, and we, we have cobbled together a package for them that, that, you know, would incentivize them to maintain their presence or even a greater presence here. At no time, I repeat, at no time, do we have any conversation about them wanting to vacate a road. At no time-
With houses on it.
At no time did they even mention that they would be coming forward with a potential proposal to vacate the road while our discussions were ongoing. I wanna make that clear because I wanna squash any discontentment out in Kyle or Rusha Township that we're a go to with Republic. And I think you were privy to a letter I wrote to Republic in, in strong enough terms, I believe, explaining the difficult position that they've left us in while people were imagining these, these links and collaborations and, and so forth, that this was a done deal and they had met with us and we were agreeing to these things. It, it's really a very sensitive issue. And, and I, I don't, I don't like the way they've handled it. And I don't like the perception issue they left lingering out there with their work with us. So I, I felt compelled on, on our behalf to, to communicate that with them. And, uh, but I wanna say here publicly, we want them here. They're a big employer here. We need to work to keep them here. We need to work to expand their jobs here. But we need to have transparency in that issue with regard to their plans for Lorain County going forward.
And having been in some of those meetings with you, I can vouch that no time did any of that ever come up. Um, but as, as you pointed out, you know, we wanna continue to work with them and help their company succeed and grow.
I just wanted to put that out there because I, I, I want the rumors to go away as best as I can. I, I, I shared the correspondence with both Kyle and Rusha Township that, that was sent. So it's clear where our position is. And I just wanna get back to a right balance because there was a lot of, a lot of blow coming from those areas that, that we were doing some, some possibly backroom deals on this. Didn't happen. That's- That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
As indicated, I will need an executive session with commissioners regarding two pending litigation issues. I also would mention that when we were talking about suspending our maintenance fee, a couple of times I mentioned the litigation regarding Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District having an impact. The Supreme Court just came out with a decision yesterday in which they sustained the validity of those, those fees. So that has a dual impact on us. It creates some work for Don and we, we will lose a little bit of our fees from the Columbia Township area because we have always told those people we would not double hit them. But for the long-term integrity of our agreement, it does sustain.
Fees are legal.
Kind of the same thing. So it does, it is a, a decision that supports our implementation of fees.
Now, there's supposed to be a certain amount, when they, when they impose that fee, there's supposed to be a certain amount that comes back to us from Northeast Ohio Regional. We're still working out the, the mechanics of that and, and how to deal with that. I don't want any of this to jeopardize the work we're doing with Columbia Township going forward. We'll figure it out. Sometimes you just can't figure it out until you get down there, down the road. And, and so I want to move forward, but we have to adjust some of our projections and, and look at some of the relationships. And not to mention, we took a portion of Columbia Township at their request out of Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer. As you're aware, I talked to Northeast Ohio Regional about bringing a trunk sewer down through Homestead Falls to Sprague Road. And they didn't say they wouldn't do it, but they, they were confused because we're in, we're out, we're in, we're out. And I'm working with the trustees out there to decide.
If we're in or out.
If we're in or out. I can tell you that if we're out, we're never gonna see any development on the south side of Sprague Road. And all one has to do is drive down Sprague and look north to see all the development going on in Homestead Township and, and Homestead Falls. The, the, there's a big reason why there's nothing south of Sprague Road because there is no sewers south and Homestead Falls and Homestead Township will not stub out to us. It's gonna take, it's gonna have to be Northeast Ohio Regional bringing that main trunk down to Sprague Road. So we've got a lot of work to do. That's when we do our best work because we're busy and we have to move through it. So I'm looking forward to these things next year.
Yeah, it, it might not be too bad for us. You know, it's not gonna be good for the, those Columbia Township residents in there, but yeah, the way it's set up, twenty-something percent of their fee still has to come back and be used. And twenty percent of their fee is almost as much as our entire fee. So we won't.
Well, it's, it's, it's also gonna make it more challenging with that area getting back into Northeast Ohio Regional. And that's what I hope to come out of all this planning session. I don't envy the trustees in Columbia Township. We may be assisting them with, we've arranged, we're doing the contract and bringing the people in. They're the ones that are gonna be on the front row with their residents and it's not gonna be fun. Land use plans, drainage plans, sewer plans are not fun and, you know, the trustees got a lot of aggravation ahead of them. But I, you know, I, I credit them with our partnership and wanting to acknowledge that they need to do these things.
Don? The commissioners report.
Last Wednesday, we did not have a meeting, so there was a webinar that I sat through regarding workforce development, which I found out later that you also were on that webinar. So you know administratively, we need to.
You just didn't want to come hang out with me.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know you were doing it. So we need to find out or decide who's gonna take the lead, either Job and Family Services or Workforce Development.
The, the, did you see how much has to be done in, in a period of time? I've already got the, the wheels rolling. We're, we're moving down the road. We're, we're ready, starting to work on the relationships, the implementation. I was at the WIB board. We're, we're educating the WIB board to their changing role, some of the responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners by virtue of the WEOLA changes and, and, and some of the program the state want to do are gonna be more fully burdened onto the WIB board. We're gonna need to change some of our appointments to the WIB board. You'll still be appointing. You ultimately make the decision on how this program's gonna run. I'm probably gonna recommend to you a bifurcated approach where Job and Family Services and the Workforce Development contract with each other back and forth, the WIB contracts with Workforce Development to provide services. Most of the mechanisms that we need are already in place, it's just a shifting of some of the responsibilities. The wraparound services that they want with, with youth, youth, Utes, you remember that movie, Utes? That's, you know, New York, never mind. With the, with the youth are gonna be challenging, especially since they consider all the way up to twenty-four. And, and, you know, tenant requirements with single-family homes and, and qualifications along with WEOLA has a little bit of different set of criteria for who becomes eligible and what funding stream it comes in and out of and from. And they, they're calling it their, they, they wanted to look a lot like the summer employment program and they're calling it, you know, year-round services to youth. It's, is a lot there.
Glad you were on there because I, that would have been a lot to try to catch you up on.
Well, not to mention all of the, all the WEOLA changes that are coming and the pending litigation with the state of Ohio from Area Seven that has stalled everything with regard to designation. We still don't know where we're gonna be. We still don't know we're gonna be an independent region force still or they're gonna throw us into a different region force or connection. We, we don't know. And I'm not sure when Area Seven's going to, you know, the state's gonna rule on that and then it's gonna go to the federal government because I guarantee you, we're gonna do the very same thing. Where as soon as they, they figure out Area Seven, they're gonna come back and they force us into a collaboration, we're gonna file an appeal with the state, they'll deny the appeal, we're gonna go to the Fed and we're gonna ask the Fed to, to make a ruling because we meet all the requirements under WEOLA to be an independent area.
Right.
Right? And whatever plans the state has mashed behind their, their desires, you know, we're gonna pull the curtain on that. So these things, there's a lot, a lot in the next year and there's a lot of money at stake, a lot of dollars at stake. And, and I will tell you, the state of Ohio has done a terrible job, terrible job with, with, with a lot of the federal programming and we've never gotten a real clear understanding of how to deal with the workforce development dollars, WEAR dollars, now WEOLA dollars because they, they tend to mash their own thinking on top of what the requirements from the Fed are and they don't mesh very well together. So a lot to do, Commissioner, there too.
Yeah. Wednesday evening, a dear friend of mine, Nat Porter, had passed away and they had a, a celebration at Church of the North Coast. I actually met her here at one of our commissioners' meetings back when we cut the transit. She was one of the transit riders and she came up into the podium and we ended up becoming very good friends after that. And she used, actually used to call me every Wednesday morning and pray for all of us, you know, in, in our meeting that everything would go well. But she passed away unexpectedly and so I'm gonna miss her a lot and miss her prayers. She was a serious prayer warrior, so. Thursday, we had the final Vision 2.0. I know we had three prior meetings setting goals for the college. Mr. Cortez, you were there a few times, a couple times, but.
I just couldn't sniff the report out, sorry.
Yeah, it was, it was long, but they did give us wine and some hors d'oeuvres.
There was wine, nobody told me.
Wine, yeah, it was really nice.
I probably could have found my way over there.
See, I, they should have told you that way you would have been there, but it was really good. What else? Monday, Commissioner Kayla and I attended City Hall in Lorraine, talking about their point of sale. I don't think they know exactly what the commissioners do. I don't know why they invited us to that, but it was actually really good to go back to where I started at City Hall in Lorraine and a lot of same people are there and they actually had a really good dialogue. So I was, I was glad that I went. And then yesterday, the Lorraine Democrat women had a really nice picnic over at St. Ladd's in Lorraine and really good food. Poggy made some really great hamburgers, best hamburgers I've had in a long time. So he gave me the secret recipe for his hamburgers. I'll tell you all guys later. Poggy's secret hamburger seasoning, so. All right, end of my report.
Busy week. We did actually meet, Commissioner Kowski and I, on Tuesday to approve Lorraine County Solid Lease District five-year plan. We ended up with ninety-eight point one percent approval. I think it's the highest we've had since I've been here, approval of the plan. Let's move forward on it. Nwaka had their quarterly governing board meeting, four and a half hours of discussing our transportation issues and governance. It's been a hectic year and we do have our summit coming up September twenty-sixth. Hope you guys can attend, depending on what your schedule is. It will be a convention center in Cleveland.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be in it anyway, so you just have to do it.
I didn't, I didn't expect to. I wasn't inviting you, I meant my peers.
Thanks a whole lot.
I meant my peers.
You know, before you came, you came important, I used to go there.
Yeah. No, you didn't. Betty never let you go. Also, again, yeah, the Hope Over Heroin rally on Saturday. Got the opportunity to say a few words on Pastor Kiatin and his group, Angel Arroyo, what it turned out, gigantic walk parade, motorcycles, just a great event and it went through the evening. And again, thank the city of Lorraine for inviting us to their Buildings and Land Committee discussion on point of sale, but I think it's better directed to the county order. Wouldn't you agree, Commissioner?
That or just, I don't know. I don't know if we can really do anything, but if we can, we'll try, I'm sure.
End of my report.
Just wanted to congratulate all the organizers of Hope Over Heroin, had a chance to attend that event on Friday and, boy, it was, it was raining and it was windy and it was cold and they still had seven hundred people. We came out at least Friday night. When I was there, I was not able to attend on Saturday, but just want to thank the faith-based community. It's amazing once a faith-based community gets involved, how it gets so much traction. And so for Pastor Williams and others who organized that, thank you for all that you're doing. As we heard earlier, we've got a steep mountain to climb, but the whole community's gotta get involved so that we can help people turn their lives around. Good luck to the Urban League with a big event coming up this weekend at DeLuca's. Also to the organizers of the Elyria Apple Festival, that's always a fun event. I always say I love the Apple Festival. The only thing I don't like are all the bees seem to show up for one last hurrah, but it's always a, a great event. Also, as you read in the paper, some information got out about the courthouse a little bit earlier than we'd anticipated, but still I think this is a, a real positive development. We look forward to continuing to move forward with, with the judges and the housing of the adult probation and most importantly, saving the courthouse. So it truly is a win-win situation. Also, I'd like to thank all the, the doctors and the nurses at UH who provided treatment for my mother when she was battling stomach cancer. I'd like to thank the nurses and staff also at Hospice at Mercy for the comfort that you provided my mother in her final ten days. And thank you to all of you who've offered prayers and words of support. Thank you very much.
All right, it's not gonna take long. We're gonna look at the road, it isn't.
You're gonna wear your pointy shoes out there?
And the land bank is us anyway, so.
Okay, I just, if we're pressed, we can move the time up.
No.
Okay. Great.
Motion to go into executive session is outlined by the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
They're doing trucks.
It's easy to start and it's painful to stop.
Prescription drugs are prescription for a reason. If you take too many of a prescription narcotic, you die.
Chelsea was very well-liked by her friends and by her teachers.
Ronnie was going down to Tennessee State to be the next player to come out of Tennessee State.
Joey was extremely popular, just surrounded by friends.
Mark was an athletic, fit-looking kid.
Aaron enjoyed talking and debating with any and all people.
The prescription pain pill problem is a huge epidemic.
This is an epidemic.
This is an epidemic that has infiltrated our young people.
We never had a conversation with Joey about prescription drugs because we truly had no idea that there was any kind of recreational use going on.
The first time I started doing painkillers was when I was seventeen.
I would steal pills from my friend's mom. Her stepmom had script for Vicodin, that was like heaven. I went in her room and stole Vicodin every day.
He would ask to use the bathroom in other people's homes and he'd go in there and go in their medicine cabinets and steal prescription drugs.
These medications are available everywhere in every socioeconomic environment.
Ronnie was a starting hat back, one of our best players. He got several scholarship offers.
Ronnie was very popular in the neighborhood.
Ronnie was a neat freak, clean freak, always had his hair braided. When he got into the pill use, his mood changed, heat changed, like was that Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde?
Ronnie's appearance really deteriorated and it was really unlike him.
I said, are you doing drugs? And my son looked at me with these eyes of how could you even think of that, mom?
I was walking up to football practice. My coach was walking towards me. He just had this crazy look on his face. He goes, you think they might have found your brother? And I was like, to me, I was like goof and I was like, I didn't know he went missing. So I was like trying, making him like goofing off. And he was like, no, Justin, seriously, they, he might have found his body. And I was like, wait a minute, I was, whoa, what? He's like, yeah, they, they found, they discovered a body in an apartment in Telford.
I never thought my son would take prescription drugs without a prescription.
Parents often trip themselves up by asking the simple question, are you using drugs? No. One has to be able to say, I'm seeing some signs here that concern me.
He was a little bit more argumentative. We thought that was maybe hormones.
The person has what we call pinpoint pupils. Literally, the pupils look like a pinpoint.
She slept odd hours.
We didn't know why he was sleeping so late.
If I wasn't able to get high, then I didn't want to get out of bed because, you know, the physical withdrawals.
We were missing tinfoil from the kitchen, missing spoons.
We'd find the pens that were cut in half.
Straws.
There were a lot of charges coming on the credit cards.
We thought that there was somebody stealing money out of her account.
That's probably a pretty good clue, there's something going on. Joey was pretty upset with his roommates. They were spending all their money on medication. Had I known that the medications that they were taking were so dangerous, I would have told them, you're not even going back to that place.
If you feel something's going on, you gotta invest in it.
I thought it was just a phase. We, part of it when we were in high school and it's just sort of a phase you go through as you go, you know, experience life and you grow out of it. And I thought he was on that track.
Joey had been found and, and he was unconscious.
He had all these medications that he had just received from this doctor. More than likely, he questioned, snorted it. We're just being completely hit blindly by, you know, a situation we had absolutely no understanding of and no notice of. And in the meantime, my husband's in the house, I'm out front in the, in the front of the house just, you know, wondering what we're, we're dealing with here. And so finally Joe just came out and said, he's gone.
I was downstairs getting ready for work. Cookie told me she couldn't get Mark up. Mark was powerful and had the nickname in some circles of Tank. I reminded her that what she had to do was get a cup of water and splash him with it and stay out of his way. And she told me it was different. We found a clear plastic bag of loose pills. I'm not sure if he even thought he was doing drugs and I know that sounds crazy, but it's not like it was heroin or cocaine. We followed the ambulance to the hospital. A few minutes later, someone came in and, and told us that Mark was dead. We never thought that was a possibility.
I had no idea that kids were abusing medicine.
I came home one night, saw the basement light on and went up to the window and my son was crushing and snorting pills.
We would find pills in the shoes, in the jackets that are hanging in the closet in the pockets.
I found some pills hidden under his cushion.
They were in his socks. I never checked my kid's socks.
He took the light switch plate off and put them in there.
Look everywhere. Is it an evasion? No, you're doing the right thing as a parent.
I would question Chelsea and she would always assure me that everything is fine and nothing's wrong.
Kids don't want to get in trouble, so they're gonna tell you exactly what you want to hear.
There was always something down deep inside that said to me, something's wrong. You doubt yourself because you wonder if you're making a bigger deal out of something.
You know, maybe deep down, my parents knew that I was high.
You can't always believe your child. Their lies get bigger when they're trying to hide substance abuse.
I knew her inside and out and I remember Chelsea as the little girl that she used to be.
I looked at him and I only saw the most beautiful son in the world.
It was very difficult to think that she would be lying to me, which she was. She was out using and abusing prescription drugs.
Long-acting agents like oxycontin are meant to be delivered in the body over a period of hours, if not a day. If they're chewed, crushed, and snorted, you get the entire dose at one blast and if the body's not ready to accommodate that, you will stop breathing.
We needed to call the police, but what are their neighbors going to think?
Put all of that aside and focus on what's important, as difficult as it may be.
Families can't get too caught up in the idea that, oh, there may be an arrest, charge on my son or daughter, they could be in jail, they could be in the morgue.
The law saved my life. If my mom hadn't called the cops on me, I don't know where I would be right now.
It was the most difficult thing to do, to call the police on your, on your own child. It was horrible. I have gone from putting importance on things like, what college are you going to get into, to just celebrating the fact that she's alive today. She's doing very well. She's clean and sober. She's productive. She's sweet and I have her back and I'm thankful and it's wonderful.
Aaron had spent the night at a friend's and they found him blue and non-responsive. They took him to a local hospital.
He was using Vicodin, which we found out through his toxicology, what was in his blood system.
I witnessed him have two heart attacks in ICU. He had staph. He had pneumonia. He went through seizures. The doctor was explaining to us that he was going to die. We held his hands on each side and we started crying and he just laid there.
People use the medications in an abusive way, not knowing what the full consequences are and somebody ends up here.
Within 24 hours, Aaron had opened his eyes.
Parents are the first line of defense in terms of prescription drug abuse.
You gotta sit your kids down. You just gotta tell them about the severity of the problem.
There's a number of steps that you can take.
Educate your child and yourself very early.
Anybody who feels that this can't happen to my child.
It could happen to your kid.
Make sure that you don't have excess pills in your home.
Keep your medication locked up because you're never gonna notice if something's gone.
What my mom does is she has these take-home pee tests that I gotta take. No, I want to keep my mom proud of me and I don't want to let her down.
You need to have the conversation with them about drug and substance abuse and you need to include prescription drugs and guide them so they're able to get through their high school years and into college and through their college years drug-free.
Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation.
After, you know, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they, they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with this sad look. So it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now.
Yeah, cause like sometimes, like when I'm on the couch or whatever and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing and I was not very happy with her. So I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but I, we both lived and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again, just giving this dog, who, who knows what it would have happened to her, a new life and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's, he's not that much trouble because he, he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken. So I didn't really have to go through the, the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and, and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered and that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you. And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play and, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. He, I found him on the internet, actually. He was, he had, they had his picture on the internet and so I called and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm, I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there and they all need good homes. And if, if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's gonna be in your life for the rest of your life and they'll love you no matter what.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
We load up an 18-foot trailer. Rugs, cables, audio/video equipment, sound systems, all the lighting. Then we have the task of hauling everything out of the trailer and taking it into the gymnasium or lunchroom or whatever large multipurpose room they have for us. We're generally there for the whole day. If we're going to be back at the school the next day, we can leave our equipment still set up. If we're gonna be at a different school the next day, then we have, we have the job of removing it from the multipurpose room and taking it back to the trailer, loading up the trailer and locking it up and calling it quits for the day. It started in January 2007 with CERTS, which is Safe Routes to School. And Ken had an idea to develop the Safety Star program. It has escalated to the point where as of this year's date, we have seen 38,000 students in Lorraine County.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to four, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to four. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce.
We bring safety to the school. We're self-contained. We have all the mock simulations of scenarios such as busy intersections. We have all the roads, movie screens, our audio/video system. Streets, sidewalks, grass, working traffic signals, working railroad signals. And we bring that all to the school so the student does not have to leave. To make sure that all the lights bulbs are working. And that all the audio/video equipment is up and running. We then put on the program. We put together a dynamite program with a lot of positivity. We're very animated. The students enjoy it while they're learning an important rule about safety. When we ask questions, we ask for group participation. It's never just one student answering the question. It's everybody answering the question together. Are you ready?
Yeah!
Teachers included. We make learning fun for everybody. We show two, two short films. One is Willie the Whistle. And Willie the Whistle teaches kids in a, in a simple format, the correct way to walk with parents, aunts or uncles, or any other family members that are responsible, adults, to cross streets where there are no stop signs or where it's just stop signs and no traffic lights and to cross streets where there are parked cars, what to look for, when to cross, when there are cars parked along the sides of the street. And again, that's, it's all basically looking left, right, and left. When the short film is over, we generally teach from what the kids just watched. And that's, those are the scenarios then we go over with our, our mock setup. We go over basically what the video has just gone over. And then we let the kids apply what they just learned to doing it in real life, to our, our mock simulation that we have in the room that we are performing in. Everybody leaves at the end of our program with a great feeling, knowing that all they have to do is look left, right, and left again and they're gonna be smiling for a good, long time. I would highly recommend this program to all administrative principals in, in every school system. And it's, it's a very good program. I believe in it 100%. I've had students see me at the mall or see me at a carnival or a festival and come up and say, I remember you. You're the safety guy. You're Mr. Neal. And the first question I ask them, what are the three ways you look before you cross the street? This could be the year after we saw them and they always say, left, right, and left again, and they say it with a smile. So I know our program works. Because you did a good job today, at the end of the day, you're gonna get to go home with the yellow Safety Star bag, okay? Ah, the fun part. The students get to take home their surprise at the end of the day, which is the yellow Safety Star bag. And inside that bag are some neat things about pedestrian safety. We have the pedestrian safety flashcards. They also will get the Safety Star Certificate of Participation, which has their school name on it and the date. And we like to let the kids know that that's something that they can take home and hang on their refrigerator, they can hang on their bedroom door, or they can have their parents put it in a scrapbook for them. Their parents will receive some information such as the top 10 safety tips for adults. such as the top 10 safety tips for adults. Because even as adults, we need to refresh our memories on safety. They, as students, will receive the top 10 Safety Star tips for students. They will also receive a Safety Star maze for those that are a little bit more adventurous and like a challenge. We also offer a safety coloring sheet. And there are some other things in the bag, but the things the kids like the most is the Safety Star pencil. And that's a pencil that changes colors when you touch it. And with that pencil comes the Safety Star eraser, which is a yellow eraser shaped like a star and it says "Safety Star" on it. We need 40-foot by 40-foot area, electrical accessibility and a way to turn off and on the main lights of the room for our movies that we show. The smallest class we've done is 15 students. The largest class is 60. So usually, the classes range from 23 to 25 students per class. There are occasions where the school has to schedule two classes at a time. We're very flexible. We do have the ability to fit into smaller rooms. So we pretty much will accommodate to what they can offer. I would highly recommend this program to all principals in every school system. At the end of the day, I feel very, very good. I'm excited that I know that kids are going to practice what they've learned and I can go home and sleep good at night, knowing that those children are going to get to school safely. They're going to get home safely. They're going to be smiling and their parents are going to be smiling because everybody is safe.